City Council Study Session for the morning of Thursday, March the 25th. All of our council is present. The first item on our agenda this morning is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide final funding recommendations for fiscal year 2122 and prior years available funding for a variety of federal and and made City of Mesa funding opportunities. So I wish I was there in person, but I that Chris, who is it Natalie and team of individuals will give us the presentation on this?
Mayor, we have Ruth and Michelle here this morning and Natalie's is back up waiting for them. So yeah, go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Ruth Giesi, Community Services Director, and with me today is Michelle Alvenesi, our Housing and Community Development Director. And today we will be reviewing our recommended funding for fiscal year 2122. The funding recommendations include federal funding, which is our Community Development Block Grant, our Home Investment Partnership, our Emergency Solutions Grant, and then we also have our Human Services Programs with general funding. Today's funding review only includes normal annual HUD allocations and human services funding. Other funding related to the pandemic and the new rescue plan are being reviewed and recommendations to allocate those dollars will come forward to council later this month. The annual funding process began with our first annual kickoff meeting. We invited agencies to come and learn about what the process entails and also talk about council priorities, scoring, and what they could expect. We then opened up the application period between October 20th and November 24th. The purpose of the initial orientation was to provide an overview of each funding source and applicable regulatory requirements. We also then had two training sessions that were held in October. That and that really gave applicants the ability to get technical assistance, especially if they were new to the process, and learning about how to submit the application through our Zoom Grants application software. The Housing and Community Development Advisory Board and the staff reviewed and scored all the applications. And of course, city council strategic priorities of homelessness, food insecurity, and education were taken into consideration. In addition, we had the presentations of the agencies to our Housing and Community Development Board in February, and staff presented and sought approval of the funding recommendations to the Community and Cultural Committee on March 11th. CCD approved the funding recommendations before you today. I will now turn it over to Michelle to review each funding source and to go over the recommendations in detail.
Thank you, Ruth. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Michelle Alvenesi, Housing and Community Development Director. I'm going to first provide an overview of the funding sources and the amounts that we have available to allocate, and then I will go through the actual funding recommendations. So our first category for our federal funding is our Community Development Block Grant, and we anticipate having just over $4.2 million available this year. And those categories for funding include public services, which would be professional programs and services directly administered to the community, such as emergency shelter, home-delivered meals, or crisis services. And we have a 15% cap on public services, which is maximum of 15% of our total allocation. That leaves $633,000 for that category. We have our non-public services category, which is capped at 65% of our total allocation, and that includes the capital improvements, projects that would be facility and infrastructure improvements, as well as those robust shovel-ready projects. And finally, for program administration, we have a cap of 20%, which is for staff to administer the funding process, for contract administration, and for agency technical assistance, as well as compliance. For our next federal funding source, we have our home program, and that's estimated with approximately $1.5 million this year. And those eligible categories of funding include our tenant-based rental assistance, which is transitioning folks from shelter to more permanent housing situation, rental and utility deposit assistance, as well as new housing development. For our Emergency Solutions Grants, this grant is specifically to address homeless services, and we have an estimated amount of funding available of $346,000. Eligible categories for this funding source include emergency shelter, which is capped at 60% of our total allocation, and services including rapid rehousing, such as emergency shelter, transitioning to a more transitional or permanent housing, homeless prevention, such as eviction prevention, and navigation services in the community. For the Human Services Program, we have $520,000 for direct program service, and this funding is comprised of general funds as well as utility donations through the Utility Billing Contribution Program, A Better Community, or ABC. And those eligible services include homeless prevention assistance, as well as crisis needs or access to basic services, youth programs such as education or mentoring programs, and education or other city council priority programs. Just want to take a minute to cover the methodology for the funding recommendations this year. Staff did a comprehensive review of all of the agency requests, not only among the specific funding source, but amongst all of the different funding sources. In addition, we looked at the overall score, and we looked at the city council priorities, which included homelessness and crisis services, as well as education and training. So for our federal funding sources, we really looked at considering funding those larger agencies that have the capacity and experience of administering federal programs, as well as those that are most closely identified in our five-year HUD consolidated plan. For the Human Services Dollars, we really concentrated on looking at some of those smaller agencies or new agencies that might not necessarily have the capacity to do the federal reporting, but they do deliver critical services to the community. I will now transition over to the actual funding allocations recommended for the funding for fiscal year 2122, and we'll start with CDBG. Again, this is for our Public Services, which is the 15% of our allocation, and all of these specific services happen to fit into the category of homelessness. So we'll be recommending Community Bridges for two of their programs, for their outreach program, and as well as their crisis services. ASTRA Aging for their Meals on Wheels program, and you'll notice when we get to the Human Services funding that they also did apply in that category, but they were recommended for funding in this specific category as they do have the capacity to report on the federal regulations. For Child Crisis Arizona, we have Caring for Our Homeless Children, and two programs for New Leaf, which is the Housing Support Services, which are those wraparound services at the shelters, as well as the Emergency Shelter and Self-Sufficiency and Stability Services. And finally, we have Mark Community Resources for their Homeless Court Navigation. So we anticipate allocating a total of $633,672 for this specific category. For our next category, we have our CDBG Housing and Public Facilities. This again is those bricks and mortar kind of projects. We did have just two requests in this category. We do have the largest amount of funding available in this category, and we do have some challenges sometimes with agencies applying in this category because they are difficult projects. However, we are recommending funding for the City of Mesa Housing Rehabilitation Program. I have 1.5 million. And just to let you know, Mayor and Council, we have had an increase in the number of requests for emergency assistance over the last year since COVID hit. And right when COVID hit, we did have to put a hold on doing the major emergencies just because of the contractors going into the homes and and the protection that we needed for COVID. But we are ramping up and ready to move forward with those. Any funds that are remaining in this category, we have the ability to either do a mid-year funding cycle and allocate to additional programs and services, or if we'd like, if we have specific programs or services in the City of Mesa that are a priority, we could look at funding those mid-year as well. For the Home Investment Partnership Program, we're recommending allocation of three particular programs with Community Bridges for the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, and this is really transitioning those chronic homeless individuals into a more stable housing for one- to two-year term, and City of Mesa programs for Tenant-Based Rental Program, which would be a longer-type assistance up to two years, which would also hopefully include moving them into permanent housing through a Housing Choice voucher, and the Rent and Utility Deposit Program, which helps folks get into new units. Recommended funding here is $1.3 million. For our Emergency Solutions Grant, and again, these are solely for homeless services and programs. We have three agencies that applied and all recommended for funding, two agencies of which are Homeless Shelter Emergency Services for New Leaf and Chrisless Shelter for Domestic Violence, and then we have the Rapid Rehousing Collaborative Grant with Save the Family, as well as Southwest Lutheran Social Services. That's a tongue twister right there. So we're recommending $320,772 for these programs and services. Before I transition onto the Human Services Funding Recommendations, I just wanted to share with Mayor and Council the total contributions of the Human Services Dollars. So illustrated on the screen for you, we have a breakout of the different categories that the Human Services Dollars fund. And I'll start with ASTRA Aging. So we do pay utilities for their for the senior center, for the programs that they administer, which is about 9% of the budget. Then we have our three contracted community navigators for the Community Court. This is not new this year with the Community Court, but they have increased the number of navigators, and the Community Services Division will be administering those programs. As well, we have Mesa Promise, which is a city council program priority, and we have set aside annually up to five years, $100,000. And then our HUD reallocation to the City of Mesa Line of Credit. This is annually up to four years of $100,000 each year. And then we have the $520,000 that we can allocate to programs and services in the community, which makes up the majority of our budget at 51%. So I'll now transition into the Human Services Funding. I do have two slides for this funding.
Excuse me, Michelle, before you you go on, just a quick question. I noted, for example, that the home funding amount, we started out with a million and a half, ESG, $346,000. The funding recommendations are, you know, a little less than than the total amount that's available. Can you explain to me why that is?
Absolutely. Very good question, Mayor. So the different differences in the recommendations and the allocation that's available is the program administration cost that pays for staff to administer those programs internally for the City of Mesa.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, so getting back to Human Services, again, with priority of crisis services, homeless assistance, as well as education and youth mentoring, we have on the screen for you the programs that we are recommending, programs that include emergency food assistance and domestic violence, as well as shelter services for parenting youth with Maggie's Place, Teen Lifeline for crisis services for suicide prevention for teens, which that has significantly increased, Big Brothers and Big Sisters for the Mesa Mentoring Program. We have House of Refuge for the Adopt a Home for Families, so that's a shelter specifically for families, Posde Cristo for their homeless relief services, as well as job and education prep, and Boys and Girls Club for their academic success program. Moving to the second slide, we have Aid to Adoption of Special Kids, and this is for their Family Kinship Support Program, as well as Mesa United Way for the VITA Program, which is the tax assistance program for low and moderate income folks. Arizona Brain Food for the Weekend Food Bags, and these are for kiddos that maybe would not necessarily have meals on the weekends, so they have those bags to carry them through. The Mesa K Ready Program, Community Legal Services, and this is for any legal advocacy and education, and we have seen an increase in this over the last year and a half due to COVID. Local First for their Fuerza Local Program, and Oakwood Creative Care, which is the respite and nursing care. That covers $520,000 of the direct programs and services. I'll transition it back over to Ruth, and she's going to cover the next steps and timeline.
Thank you, Michelle. So we have a 30-day public comment period that began on March 22nd, and we anticipate having these funding recommendations on consent agenda on April 5th. And we would like to plan to submit these final recommendations to HUD by mid-May. And with that, we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ladies. I know that this presentation is the culmination of a lot of work on the part of nearly every agency in the City of Mesa, our our community volunteers, our board, our Human Services, Human and Community Development Board. I know that they spend a lot of time on this, as has council. So I just want to express my appreciation to everybody that's worked so hard to get this to the point that we're voting on it today. I saw a couple of hands. Let's start with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Ruth, one of the areas that I'm always interested in is the Human Services portion, as you know. And by the way, thank you, Ruth and Michelle, for the presentation. It was very good. One of my one of my concerns within our community is is not only the domestic violence in the survivors, but also the teen suicides. And and quite honestly, I would rather see a reduction in some areas like maybe Posde Cristo to shore up some of the organizations like Teen Lifeline or and/or House of Refuge. You know, we've had a an increase in domestic violence, you know, because of the pandemic. And, you know, and I know the House of Refuge could use the funds to help that help with that. And then we've had a rash of teen suicides across the city, pretty much in every school district that's that's represented in the city, and I'd really like to see some funding pushed over to those those crisis services as well to help shore them up a little bit.
Thank you. I know I saw Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. Ruth and Michelle, I know that this is a real difficult task trying to fund so many agencies within the City of Mesa. And and I appreciate you talking about if an agency has the infrastructure in place, they're more likely to get the the federal dollars. And so so I think that's something that we need to mention in the community. The human service funding is very competitive, as you know, and we've had many agencies wanting funding for the services they provide. So thank you for mentioning that. I think that's important. And so what I might suggest is that when you go through this process again, you might mention those to those late agencies that we're serving that if if, you know, they may get they may get funding in another area, but not everything, not not related to human services. They may get federal dollars to do some other kind of services, so which would offset some of the funding that we're trying to provide. So I know we went through this through the Community Cultural Development Committee. I know it's a very difficult job, and I appreciate the board, and I appreciate what you are doing in terms of meeting the needs of our community. So, Michelle, thank you, and Ruth, thank you. And I know it's a difficult job, but I just want to let you know that we're here to support you, and 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 of course, we want to support our agencies. And thank and we have to thank our agencies because they're a lifeline. They're the lifeline of our community. If it wasn't for them, I don't know what we would do. So so thank you, and I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spillsbury.
Yes, I would, of course, echo the same sentiments. Thank you, Ruth and Michelle. I appreciated getting this presentation earlier this week so that I could wrap my brain around it, since this is my first time, and it there is a lot that goes into this, and so I appreciate all the hard work. I have a couple of questions. This is maybe just I just for my for my sake. On the CDBG slide, is there a mistake on there on Community Bridges? It has the same thing. Are we missing the homeless navigation part on there?
Mayor and Council, you are correct. I apologize, there is a typo on here, and so we'll be sure to correct that before it actually goes to city council for consent.
Okay. The homeless navigation was quite a bit more money than the $56,000, correct? I'm going from the other sheet that I have. I think it's $176,000?
Yes, Mayor, Councilspillsbury. Community Bridges, the homeless navigation services, they requested $220,000, and our recommended award is 80% of that, which is $176,000.
Yeah, I think we just copied the number from up above, the 56.
Okay.
Yeah, good catch.
Thank you, member.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was not something hadn't changed. But what Councilmember Luna was was saying, so we don't know when these agencies apply, whether they're getting regional funding or state other funding.
Mayor and Council, we do, when we have the application process, the agencies are required to fill out their proposed budget, and in the proposed budget, not only does it include what they're requesting from City of Mesa, but also any other committed or tentative funding that they've requested from other agencies. So several of the agencies will apply to different local jurisdictions for the same program as they are serving several different residents from other cities.
Okay, okay. So like Kevin's suggestion of giving, you know, Teen Lifeline and some others more money. I mean, looking on this sheet, it looks like we gave them really close to what they requested, right? So Kevin, are you suggesting to give them more than they requested, or?
Well, it's either match what they requested or or more if they could utilize those funds to help the teens.
Okay, because I mean, it looks like on the Teen Lifeline one in particular, we're only about $800 off of what they requested. I was just curious about that. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
And Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, I do want to follow up. The way that our methodology, how we did that this year, is that we looked at the scores and we based so we went from the top, and the highest scoring agency, we started with 100%, and then we kind of went down from there. So for example, the next one was Maggie's Place, and we gave them 98%. So we tried to start and based on the scores, give them as much as we could. And unfortunately, once the money, we hit 520, and the money ran out, that's where we ended our funding, and and it was basically all agencies that scored 80% or higher were able to be funded.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Freeman. Did I see your hand up?
You did, thank you. Ruth and Michelle, thanks. I had some questions on, again, teen suicide. I know I've been reading some things about teen suicides. It's increased quite dramatically, so I appreciate you giving them some money. The Tenant-Based Assistance Programs, what are what are the goals with that? When you ask applicants, are there goals for what they're doing and what we would like as a city?
Absolutely, Mayor and Council. So when they apply for the different funding sources, each application is different and has the regulatory requirements, as well as what their outcomes are going to be. For those programs, we're looking for transitioning the largest number of individuals from either emergency shelter to a transitional type housing, to more of a permanent stable, which would be one to two years. And then our hope is that we could transition folks onto a more permanent assistance program, the Housing Choice Voucher Program, where then they can go and find their own housing within the community of Mesa. So those are kind of the goals that are targeted for those programs.
Okay. Are we also asking agencies to, and this might be a sidebar conversation, but not to acquire properties, but to place individuals in certain parts of the city? Do we dig that deeper as up to that respective agency?
Very good question, Mayor and Council. So when folks are on type of assistance program for rental assistance, we cannot and the agencies don't dictate where they have the housing. So for instance, when they're on like a voucher program or the TBRA program, Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, they are free to rent within any community area in City of Mesa as long as it fits within the rental limits that HUD sets.
Okay, thank you. I know it, and so I'm going to change a whole different gear. This is Arizona Brain Food. I appreciate their work here in our community, especially our children in our schools and getting them food for the weekends that children are without food in our community, our school age children. So I appreciate their work, and I wanted to give a shout out to them, as well as the other agencies that we work with. So with that, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Councilmember Aradia.
Yeah, Michelle and Ruth, you all mentioned, and thank you for the presentation. I know this is a difficult process, and I know we discussed this in our in our committee, council committee earlier this month, last month. So but you 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 mentioned at the beginning of the presentation around additional carriage money coming in or relief money. And I know, you know, there's there's always a limited amount of funding that goes out during this process, but based on the pandemic, you know, the amount of funding that City of Mesa's received, there will be a process after this, you mentioned, for potential additional assistance that other agencies that might have not received any funding or a limited amount of funding that they can apply if it if it warrants what we're looking for for relief services. What's a process and what's a timeline on that? What's this this Human Services and CDBG process finalizes?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Very good question. So I just wanted to touch really quickly that for our COVID funding, we have already allocated and came to council for the ESG CB, the first round of funding, so we allocated just over $1 million to five different agencies. We do have approximately $9.5 million more in ESG and CDBG COVID relief dollars that we are starting the process right now, and we will be coming back to Mayor and Council with in the next two months for those recommendations. And then the relief funding, I know there hasn't been a whole lot of details that have come out on that, but I know that we'll be working through that process and coming to council at a later date.
And do do we work with the organizations that applied during these processes that we've had and and see what we can work with them, or what's what's the ideas around organizations here in Mesa that have applied and the ability for us to see how we can how they can support the efforts that we that we need in our city?
Let me let me just say something real quick. I think Councilmember Aradia and Mayor and Councilmember Aradia is that, like all the programs we've done, we've come to council at the beginning of the process and said, talked about what are the priorities we want to accomplish. Our preference is not to just kind of go back to all the agencies and see what their Our preference is not to just kind of go back to all the agencies and see what their priorities are. We actually, and you can see this in the recommendations here, we go out first with saying, this is what we're looking for, these are the types of programs and priorities we're looking for, and then ask them to, to develop proposals that meet those priorities going forward. So we'll want to make sure we confirm with council that the priorities we're looking at, whether it's homeless transition from off the streets to transitional housing to permanent housing, whether it's food security, or whether it's utility assistance, we'll have that discussion with council to make sure we have those priorities first before we ask the nonprofits to begin providing proposals.
Okay. Yeah, no, just to clarify, you know, I think for nonprofits, this is a, sometimes a difficult process of submitting grants and, or submitting for funding, and it takes time, and just wanted to clarify what's, what's the ongoing process as we have some funds based on the pandemic, and this, these, these are a lot of funds, and then future funds that are coming in, what can they expect to, to either apply for new funding or apply for a, a different type of program? But I totally agree on the, the priorities that we've set, and moving those forward, and seeing who, who we can partner in getting, getting things done.
And council, there are great questions. I think part of our dilemma is we're still waiting for guidance, too, so we still haven't received that. So it's kind of, we're kind of, I'm trying to be careful not to overcommit until we kind of get some ideas about what we can spend the money on, but that would be the process we'd probably use.
Perfect.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff.
Yes, thank you. On the navigators, has that allocation increased from last year, or the number of navigators have increased? What, do you have that information available on the navigator program? I just want to make sure as robust as possible to do the work that needs to be done. It's been successful, and I'd like to see it, see more navigators on the streets.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So their funding is level for this year. However, what, as I mentioned previously, for the court program, there's additional navigators that were added, and so there's over 252,000 that we're administering for that specific program, but they also are out in the community as well. And so for the program, there is three navigators that are proposed for this year, for the mobile outreach.
That's on the street program, the three navigators, or is that in total with the court program?
Definitely. For the street program.
So, Michelle, I was just trying to talk to Natalie. So it's a great question, Councilmember Duff. We have three in the courts, how many on the?
Two at Positricisto.
Two at Positricisto, and then one?
For downtown.
For one for downtown?
There's one for downtown.
Yeah, so six total, Councilmember Duff. We're just thinking it through because we have them, you know, three specifically working in the courts, and then we have one at Positricisto, or no, sorry, two at Positricisto, so they're located there, and then one that's available for our off-the-streets program. So I think that when the individuals assigned out to the, the shelter where we have the, where we have individuals that are.
Also, I believe you have a part to play.
Yeah. So some of those are not being funded. Well, obviously, half of those are being funded in the general fund, not in the federal, or, well, they're being funded out of the departments, I guess, versus showing up in the human services funding, if that makes sense. They're all general fund, but three of them, because they're specifically to the courts, show up under the human services contribution.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Thank you very much for the detailed explanation on that. I'm in support of the recommendations. The allocations that we've made are very close to the request, and it's hard to decide, you know, to, you know, fill every need, but I think that recommendations we have fit our priorities and are very close to the organization's request, so I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Thompson.
Sorry, one, one quick question, and, and I'm not sure that it's even on the slides, Ruth, but veterans homelessness, how are we doing with, with that?
Thank you, Mayor and, and council. We actually, on April 1st, the, your body as the Housing Governing Board will be provided an update on the VASH vouchers and how we're doing with that, and so that's coming up next week. Mary Brandon will be providing not only an update, but then also asking the board to approve the year and then the annual plan recommendations. So, but we are doing well. We are still working with, through all means possible to house as many as our veterans as we can, and we continue to use the vouchers that we have.
Awesome. Thank you, Ruth.
I have a couple of quick questions. First, let me just, again, say that I appreciate the, the thought that's gone into this, and the, the fact that you, that we've had kind of a strategic response trying to promote the goals that we have and the priorities we have as, as a city. The last time, we talked about our strategic homeless plan. I, I think we, we all expressed support for that plan. It's a good plan, but we also were, were told that there's some, some, currently some unfunded parts to that plan, you know, the, and, and so I think the process that we're going through now is, is our opportunity to address those gaps. Can, can you talk a little bit about, about, to what extent we were able to accomplish that? I mean, do we still have some, some unfunded and non, not existing components to that plan?
Yeah.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Thank you for the question, Mayor. We do have some components that are unfunded. The process that we went through today, though, shores up what we do have and makes sure that we're continuing to have supplies and the ability to, you know, move people from one step of housing to the next, based on their readiness and, and, you know, their recovery path. But we do need some additional transitional housing, and because we are in the middle of COVID, and we've seen a lot of need there, we are going to be looking at the COVID dollars to help us get a little bit of extra transitional housing and to fill some of those gaps as we move forward. So as we bring those dollars forward to you for your review, we'll, we'll be discussing that as well.
Great, great, thank you. I'll be very supportive of that. Also, in, in previous meetings over the last month, we've talked about some additional funding that's available to us for eviction prevention and, and rental assistance, and, and I noted under, under the home dollars, that there is some, some allocation there for rental assistance. Is it, is there any strategic advantage to us, maybe, are we, I know we're fully utilizing the additional federal money we got for eviction prevention, but is there any way to, to, would that, does that not free up some home dollars that we traditionally spend on eviction prevention?
Yeah. Mayor and council, so for the home dollars, it's not necessarily for eviction prevention. That tenant-based rental assistance is really moving folks from homelessness to a transitional housing, and then a more permanent stable housing. But we did fund through our CDBG funds last year, an additional $900,000 for the eviction prevention and foreclosure, foreclosure prevention program. So we do have dollars that we've been allocating out to the community in addition to the other stimulus dollars, the cares dollars that we've been receiving.
Hey, thank you. Well, again, as I review the recommendations, this is, in my mind, one of the most encouraging years we've had, because nearly all of the folks that are, were requesting funding got funded nearly, you know, 80, 90, nearly 100%. So this is, I guess, one of the, the silver linings of all of the money that's available for, for COVID relief, is that hopefully this year, between what we've got and what we know is, is going to be coming to us with additional rounds of funding, we are going to be able to be fairly generous in funding the, the human service agencies in our city. So that's, that, that's nice to see. I'll just mention one, one thing I saw that I, I'll express my disappointment, that the, the I Help program wasn't able to get funding, that this is, I think, our, our strategy for homelessness right now is, is the front door to that program is to send people over to Positricisto, and, and I endorse that. I think that's great. It's a, it's the, a great place for everyone to start, but then, when you go to that program, you see a line of women, you know, out on the curb waiting to get picked up to, to go to housing, and, you know, there, there's a finite number of women that get picked up, because, you know, after seven or eight, you know, the, the capacity is, is, is gone. So I, on a personal level, I would love to see us try to figure out a way to expand that program, because it's so successful and, and addresses, like I say, that the gaps that we've identified in our strategic homeless plan. But, but again, I endorse recommendations, and again, appreciate all the work that's gone into this. Council, any other questions or comments on, on this agenda item? This is agendized to, to provide direction, so is there a motion on this? Thank you, Mr. Luna. Mr. Luna, you're making a motion to, to recommend staff's funding levels, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Freeman, are you seconding that motion? Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Spillsbury.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Aradia.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Thank you. I skipped over Vice Mayor Duff.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you, and I vote aye as well, so that motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on Mesa's active transportation projects.
My name is RJ Zeter with the Transportation Department. With me this morning is Eric Gudarian, our Deputy Transportation Director for Traffic Engineering. So we're here to chat with you a little bit this morning about active transportation and seek some direction from council on, on how to move forward. So if you recall, the 2020 Mesa Moves Bond Program included three categories: regional roadway improvements, arterial road reconstruction, and what we're here to talk about this morning, active transportation projects. Just as a refresher, first, thank you to all of you for supporting, taking the question to the voters last fall. I know that there was a lot of discussion about the timing of that, but 70% of the folks that voted on this question voted yes. And if you looked at the number of people who voted, there were a lot of people that went down ballot, and that tells me that the voters in Mesa are very much interested in our transportation infrastructure. So this is just a, a highlight or a summary of where the various funding is allocated. So the $100 million in, in bonds will be spent largely on regional roadway improvements, and a smaller amount on arterial road reconstruction. If you recall, the $93 million that will be spent on regional road improvements will allow us to receive reimbursement from the Maricopa Association of Governments Prop 400 program, and it's this funding, the, the reimbursement, that takes us down into the second category, which provides for a few more regional roadway projects, a, a more significant amount for arterial road reconstruction, and then, of course, the active transportation projects. The goal of our active transportation program is to enhance our bicycle and pedestrian network to promote connectivity and health, and at the time, we went to, to the voters, we said that we would come back to the community through a public engagement process to get feedback on what is most important to residents of our community. So with that, Eric, we'll talk about our existing system and what we're looking at going forward.
Good morning, Mayor and council. I just want to highlight what we have for an existing active transportation network, and then look in, into the future as we look, look to go out to the, the public. So here's a map of our existing trails and infrastructure that we have on street. If you'll notice, most of this infrastructure has been built over the last 10 years. The, the major focus has been on the Consolidated Canal Corridor to connect us both to Tempe and Gilbert, and then it also, it allows that pathway to be connected to the, the rest of the region. We've also started to expand off the Consolidated Canal with the work in the Fiesta District that, that occurred along Southern Avenue. We've started some projects on, and completed one project on the Eastern Canal, and then also in Southeast Mesa along the 202. The dashed lines added to this map are, are projects that are programmed. They're either underdesigned and funded, or we have federal grant funding for that, that pro, these projects. I'll just highlight going kind of west to east, the set, there's a dotted line coming off of the Consolidated Canal between Mesa Drive and Stapley. This is called the South Canal Project, and, and will connect into the Consolidated Canal and go up to McKellips and provide a signalized crossing across McKellips Road. The next project that we have is, is up in the Lehigh area. It's called the Lehigh Crossing Shared Use Path. This was part of the 2018 Parks Bond Question, and is Phase One of this project. Ultimately, we, we look to have a five-mile loop in, in the Lehigh area. This project will provide both a shared use path and asphalt path, and then an equestrian path along the SRP Canal, and then bend up along the, the 20, the State Route 202 right-of-way to connect into a trailhead at Val Vista and the 202. In northeast Mesa, along Power Road, what we're calling the Red Mountain Shared Use Path, this is a project that will begin design next fiscal year. We have a federal grant to create a shared use path, starting at the, the Power Road Park and Ride right at the 202, and run north along Power Road to the city limits. This is really to provide a, a great connection. We know there's, there's a lot of, a lot of riders that are using the Haws, the Haws Trail, the Haws Trails north of the city. And then also in Southeast Mesa, continuation of, of the Mesa Gateway Shared Use Path, we should begin construction here, hopefully next month with the continuation along the 202 from Elliott Road south to Haws. There will be a, a third phase that will connect over to Power Road and, and connect up with a shared use path in Gilbert.
So in, in addition to these projects, Mayor and council, we are, we'll, we'll be adding five traffic signals along the Eastern Canal as well. It's not a shared use path project per se, because we're not in, you know, adding asphalt or concrete or lighting, but we do know that a significant amount of folks use the existing, you know, use the Eastern Canal today, so by adding these traffic signals, we'll make the crossings along the rest of the Eastern Canal more safe for people to use.
And that's the section between Brown Road south to Broadway Road. There's, there's five crossings there. This map is taken from our Bicycle Master Plan. This is our.
Eric, the, yes.
Councilmember Freeman. I'm sorry, Eric, yeah, please go ahead. Freeman.
Hey, thank you, Eric and RJ. I know that you have put the signalized crossings at McKellips and like 24th Street, going along the Eastern Canal, going kind of southeast, so that's for future expansion of the multi-use path when we get to that point, correct?
That's correct, but as we noted, people are using the, the canal banks today, so the, the signals will benefit the users, even though the actual path improvements will come at a later time.
So, so they'll be operational?
Correct.
Okay. Good, carry on, thanks.
So this is the ultimate goal for our active transportation network, and this is taken from our 2018 Bicycle Master Plan. The, the, the goal for our shared use paths is really to be able to encircle the city using the freeway right-of-way, using the 202 as a loop around the city, also where we can, using the US 60 right-of-way to, to connect trails, and then using our, our canals with SRP, and we've had some really initial discussions with RWCD about using their canals to connect north-south into that loop and connect, you know, the majority of the city. This is a, a long vision, and it's going to take us a while to get there, but... This is a, a long vision, and it's going to take us a while to get there, but, but we believe it, it is a good vision. Um, and, and so this is what we're striving for as we bring, as we bring projects forward. Um, this is the ultimate goal.
So moving forward, uh, it's our intention to, uh, release a survey to the public, and we're, we're not asking, um, the, the respondents to vote on specific projects, more we're asking a series of values questions about what's important to people. You know, our, our wider sidewalks, like we did in the Fiesta District, more important than shared use paths, you know, along canals. Our separated bike lanes on arterial streets important to folks. Shade, you know, comfort, amenities, you know, that sort of thing. So, uh, we're going to, uh, work to get this survey out far and wide. Uh, we'll work with, uh, Ruth Gisey Staff to reach out to homeowners associations. We'll use Nextdoor, the city's website. Uh, we've got a very, um, passionate, uh, uh, bike advocate on our staff who's going to reach out to the bike shops in town, uh, to make the survey available where people can just scan a QR code. And, and the goal again is to hear from, uh, our community what is important to them. Eric and I will then make a presentation, uh, tentatively to the Transportation Advisory Board, uh, seeking feedback from our volunteers, uh, uh, on that, uh, board, uh, as well as allowing the public to make comments, uh, during that meeting. Uh, we'll use the, the feedback that we've gained through the survey process to develop potential projects for council to consider. And then our goal is this summer to come back to you, uh, as a body, uh, and seek your direction on what projects you would like us to move forward with. So just as a matter of perspective, if we were to do a fully improved path with lighting and amenities and, and asphalt, you're looking at about $2 million a mile. So, you know, that can be part of the question. Uh, one of the questions is, do you want more amenities or do you want more distance, you know, in the system? In other words, a more basic model, you know, where we can get more asphalt in, uh, as opposed to adding some of the other things. But this is the feedback we'll be looking for, uh, from our residents, uh, as well as from all of you. So with that, we're happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Vice Mayor Duff.
Uh, thank you. This is something I'm passionate about and have a lot to say, so, um, give me a few minutes if you don't mind. First of all, I want to change the lens of how we talk about active transportation and look at it not as a point of recreation, but as a point of equity and access, access to jobs and food and schools and social services. We have a lot of road, um, bike users that their primary mode of transportation is a bicycle. Our low-income residents are zero to one car, and there's sometimes multiple households in their residence. So how they access and get to, uh, all those things that they need is critical. And if you notice that, um, on our network, the only continuous network we have is from like Riverview down into Gilbert. Um, there's nothing into downtown to MCC, into our low-income areas. There's no access. There's major arterials, um, but nothing can, you know, they have some bike paths, but nothing can, connected and safe. And a way that you aren't... I sometimes go downtown and, and talk to these bike enthusiasts who see bike as a, and their mode of transportation. And, um, they tell me, the, the number one conversation they have is they share with each other how they can access from one place to the other and not be killed. So if you go from here and then if you go back down through this residential and then cut over here and then like this and then like that, um, it's a job to figure it out. So I would like to look at connectivity and access and equity in the conversation. In fact, the recreational part of it, I would love to have in the recs, uh, Parks and Rec budget, so we could put more dollars into this. Um, but I want to kind of start shifting our priorities in providing equity to our residents that need it, and especially now. In addition, uh, as far as the downtown area and such, ASU will have students coming in that, um, could access downtown through a bike. There is no connection to downtown, which is a bike route. Yes, you can navigate, but it's again, one of those checkered things. You have to figure out how you can do it safely. Um, and, you know, reducing our carbon emissions is a priority, um, building wealth in our community by areas that are bikable and walkable, um, brings people and, you know, health quality of life. There's a, a lot of things, reasons why bike, our bike infrastructure, walking and biking infrastructure is very important and why I think we should put more emphasis to it. But as far as what we're looking at today, I want to see our priority looking at connections, access, equity, and serving those who need it most. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Counsel, other comments or questions on this? Uh, Councilmember Spilsbury and then Mr. Freeman, then Mr. Redia.
Thanks, Jen. I know you're super passionate about this, so it's fun to hear all of your thoughts. I, I love the canal. It runs right past my house, the one that connects from Riverview down to Gilbert, and, um, we've loved the improvements that have been done there and use that canal frequently. Um, I was wondering how surveys go out and also on the, um, fully built-out map, I just don't know what the phrase "cycle track" means, which looks like it's down main. Is that, anyways, can you explain what that is and then, um, if you could just tell me how the surveys go out?
Sure. I'll start with the surveys. So, um, as part of the Mesa Moves Campaign, we, we really learned a lot about how to try to get the word out. So there's really a number of resources that we can use. We found that Nextdoor generally is a good way to communicate with folks specifically, uh, in, in neighborhoods, and we have a, a comprehensive listing of that. Uh, as I mentioned, we're going to try to reach out directly to homeowners associations where those exist, you know, and, and I'm also open if there are other community organizations, you know. The goal is to promote this, to get as much feedback as we can. So any suggestions that, that you all have, uh, on who might be good resources to, to push the word out, uh, or, or other, uh, staff within other departments that have community contacts? We really do want to see the, uh, the, the feedback from the community. The cycle track, if you want a real example, is if you go to the Stadium Connector path. So that runs, um, if you want to...
It's on, um, it's on Country Club and both Country Club and Alma School, um, just north of Brown Road and, and north of 10th Street. It's essentially a, it's separated by a concrete median so that, um, the cyclists have their own part of the street, um, where, where they're separated. It can either be a one-way, uh, cycle track where it's essentially a separated bike lane, um, and the, the cyclists are, are on the edge of the road, or a two-way cycle track like we have in Mesa where it's in, in both directions on one side of the street. Um, the, the vision for Main Street is that, um, we have a lot of excess asphalt out there for the amount of cars that, that we have, and, and there's actually quite a passionate cycling community a, along Main Street. Um, a lot of them are here in the, in the wintertime, but, but, but year, year-round also, um, that we'd be take, looking to, to take a lane, um, from Main Street and to protect, um, the, the cyclists more than just a, a striped lane like, like we have on most of our arterial roadways, but there'd be some sort of buffer and separation for the, for that bike, um, bike lane.
Okay. Thanks. I noticed it went from Gilbert to Power, which is essentially my district, so I wanted to know what that purple line meant. So I, there are a lot of cyclists that, that are down that area, so. Um, so your point saying, you know, we have to look at whether we want nicer amenities or if we want more, um, paths, and it seems like, um, to Vice Mayor Duff's point, if we need to focus on the connectivity and accessibility that, that we need to maybe pull back on how nice we make some of these and make, you know, focus more on the connectivity. That's what it seems like to me.
So following that, uh, Mayor, Councilmember and the Vice Mayor's comments, you know, when you look at this build-out map, as Eric pointed out, this is many years, right? It's going to take, you know, to get here, you know, but our goal really is to provide that connectivity across the city. So, um, just as a point, in addition to what we're talking about with the $20 million here, whenever we're doing a capital project, so for example, we're in design right now on Broadway from just east of Mesa Drive, uh, through just east of Staple, uh, we are including bike lanes, you know, i- as part of that project. So we try very hard, you know, to include bike lanes wherever we can on arterials because we recognize that there are folks who use their bikes, not, you know, just to recreate, you know, but as, as a method of daily, you know, commuting and, and transportation. It can present a challenge because when we're rebuilding these streets in the center part of the city, we have right-of-way constraints. So, you know, now there's questions about how much property we take, you know, to try to get that, you know, that bike lane in. And, and so there, there are some practical challenges that we try to work through, uh, as we go through design. Um, but in addition to all that, we also have operating funds. So, uh, for example, Vice Mayor, we'd love to show you a, a plan we have to build a separated bike lane, uh, on First Avenue, uh, in the downtown. Um, we can do that solely with operating funds. Uh, it's, um, a little bit of paving work, uh, some slurry seal and paint, right? And, and with that, we think we can get in, uh, a, a separated bike lane. So we're going to continue to look for those opportunities as we're doing maintenance. Uh, it may change how parking looks. Uh, for example, on First Avenue, there's a lot of angled parking, but, uh, Eric's staff have found a way to get in a separated bike lane and only lose three parking spaces from Mesa Drive all the way over to Country Club. So, yeah, you're correct. We have a lot of pavement, right? And, and, and you all know First Avenue, you know, very well as one example, and I think there are more opportunities for that. So that's why this map becomes, becomes important, because it's not just big projects that will allow us to provide more connectivity, folks, but it's also, you know, as, as we're, you know, looking at, you know, routine maintenance, do we change the way we stripe our streets and try to provide more opportunities for people to bike?
Mick, can I just, uh, just quickly... I'm sorry. What happened, Mayor and Counsel, is we talk about trying to keep it simple, but a lot of times when we go out and do our community meetings, anticipation of a, a canal path or trail, the, the community wants more than just the asphalt oftentimes. You know, they want to be able to have equestrian lanes. They want to be able to maybe even sometimes depending on whether you're the resident that's located there or the person that who wants to go on the path, they may want lighting, they want other amenities, and we have to, and we have to think about trailheads. So all those play into the conversation, both what we talk about and when we meet with our community members out into the neighborhoods. There's still a huge demand for our neighbors, uh, for our residents for more improved pathways, um, because a lot of the pathways they're using now are just dirt, so they're not all weathered. Um, they're not necessarily, um, we don't have the, um, traffic control to get across busy streets. You've heard what we're doing in some areas. So all those things get taken into account, even as we go out and have our public discussions with our community.
Thank you. I know we, we have several, uh, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Redia, then Ms. Duff.
Thank you, Mayor. RJ and Eric, uh, on page three, arterial road reconstruction, there's only $7 million. Is that kind of a low amount? I mean, would we spend more in that process bond package? Just asking that question.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Freeman, if you go to the next category, you'll see an additional 38 million for arterial road reconstruction. So, uh, again, it's the 100 million, it's, it's the $93 million in regional projects that will allow us to receive $62 million in regional reimbursement. So of that additional 62, you'll see there's an additional 38, so it's 45 million total.
Great. Can we use that in District 1?
There's a lot of areas we could use it.
Come on, I just want to chuckle for my colleagues. Hey, I also...
I don't...
Well, Mayor, you're District 1.
I'm District 1.
Uh, going on, um, Vice Mayor, you brought up a good point, but I just wanted to point out that we've got a underutilized asset called the light rail in your district, and, and I anticipate students, instead of riding bikes to the new ASU college, uh, that they would put their bikes on the light rail and come to Mesa, and then hopefully bike around and, and do what they need. But, uh, I, I just, uh, I, I look at ways how we could enhance our, uh, canal system and utilize it, leverage it with SRP. Another thing that'd be great is if we could bring a canal system right to downtown Mesa, right, and come right through there, and people would love to, to ride to work in downtown Mesa and make that a hub. But, uh, I was just thinking too, Chris, maybe for you and RJ is, uh, doing a survey for city Mesa users who ride bikes and they're, uh, just within our, uh, if people are riding bikes to work and down it to the respective city offices, maybe we can reach out to them and get some ideas from them and, uh, how, how things are working. I know we have a pretty good sense of it because our transportation staff is very good about that.
Right.
But I thi, I think I'd end with that note. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and just a real quick point to the Mayor and Counsel is, remember when we developed the Mesa Moves Program, before we even brought the recommendations of the projects to the council, we did a survey as part of that initiative, right? We, we went out and the council helped us. I think you all, uh, through social media, put out the information for the survey. So it's, this is just a continuation of that engagement that started the whole Mesa Moves Program with the survey, and now we're following up on a very specific, um, category of that Mesa Moves Program.
Thank you. Mr. Redia.
Yep. Hey, RJ, on that overall map, uh, is that included the, how do you categorize the, the striped lanes that we have throughout the city? Uh, is, is that map, has that included there?
Um, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Redia, that would be the red lines. That's really our, our arterial grid, you know, so everywhere you see red would be an on-street bike lane.
Okay. And then as for those, as we improve arterials, what's the process of getting bike lanes? Is that an internal process that we decide or is that, uh, what, just what's a process on, on, when we're looking at improvements? You mentioned, uh, you know, things like Mesa Drive or Broadway, uh, how, how do we decide to add a, a bike lane there?
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Redia, it's part of the design process, uh, in, in engineering. You know, we look at what the existing right-of-way is and we see what we can fit within the existing space. Uh, sometimes we can narrow lanes to get bike lanes in. Is there anything you want to add, Eric?
Yeah, I think the goal is always to add a bike lane. Um, and then as we go through the, the specific design process, there, uh, some of the things that, that RJ mentioned, uh, just makes it infeasible, but the, the goal is to, on any arterial or collector street that we're constructing, to have a bike lane.
We start with the premise that we want on-street bike facilities, and then we work from there.
Perfect. And then on, uh, on that end, um, I know there's some complaints where, uh, when we build those, uh, street, uh, bike lanes on those, these arterials, uh, sometimes they're unusable based on the lip and, and what, what, uh, how, how contoured kind of to the drainage system is. I know that's hard to, to look at. How do you, how do you decide on providing a, a maybe a, a better way to, to, uh, add those bike lanes where, where we can limit, uh, lim, limit the, the, you know, I, I guess the unsafe needness of that lip that goes on next to the sidewalks and the streets?
So Mayor, Councilmember Redia and Eric, can you correct me on this? We require a continuous service as part of the bike lane, four feet?
Yeah, four feet.
So an example of where we got creative actually is the Mesa Drive project that's nearing completion, that because we had constrained right-of-way, we decided to extend the gutter width, uh, to actually become the bike lane. So yes, there, there certainly is a lip whenever you have asphalt, a buddy and concrete, but that was the case given the narrow constraints. We just made the gutter wider so people are on a continuous service or surface and don't have that issue of dissimilar, uh, materials.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, let's go Vice Mayor Duff and then Mr. Luna.
Thank you. I appreciate that you're installing or putting in bike lanes as we're doing arterial reconstruction. However, I do say that it, for bike paths, recommended bike paths, that we look for opportunities that are not with 45 mile-per-hour traffic. We're looking at opportunities, uh, for sub-streets that you would say, you know, would you take a child on a bike there? And those are the safe. We have a high pedestrian fatality in Arizona. I think we're 16th in the nation. Um, and it is pedestrians and bicyclists navigating against those high miles per hour. So bike paths, I think, looking at opportunities where we're at a slower speed, and that would be the formal bike path. be the formal bike path. And that some of these on arterial are to, you know, to access that business, access that place and not the only or primary way to navigate the city. Also, I'm concerned about how we reach those who use bikes the most for transportation, not recreation, but transportation. So how do we reach some of the low-income communities? What outreach can we do? What areas? I saw that the survey was in Spanish, which was great, but I want to think, and I'm glad to help in any of this, any organizations, any groups that we can reach and, because a lot of those people aren't civically engaged, but they need it the most. So how do we do the outreach in these groups that use it for transportation? And there was something, oh. So I think we should pay attention in that conversation, pay attention to where people are biking right now and what are the obstacles and the struggles and the difficulties in that, you know? Can we observe or do we know where the bulk of people are using their bike for those purposes and how we can improve it and where those opportunities would be? I think that's something to, even like, sometimes I think about our LDS missionaries, of any people using, you know, bikes 100% of the time, they probably know our city pretty well and can make some good recommendations. I just wanted to make sure we have the input from those who need it the most and how to do that and look for those opportunities for bike paths to be in a safe area and not always along a major arterial at 45 miles per hour, which is quite dangerous even with a bike path. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Jen, for making those comments of Vice Mayor Duff. I was going to ask about access. A lot of the issue in terms of some of our community members is access and having a bike path in neighborhoods is going to be very important for them. Jen mentioned that one, zero or one have a vehicle and may rely on bicycles to get them to their work and employment. So I think if we, and I don't know if we have an overall plan in terms of bike lanes within our community, but we do need them throughout the city of Mesa. And as we are resurfacing streets, we really do need to address that. And I was also going to talk about the equity and access issue in some of our poorer neighborhoods, which may rely on bicycle transportation to get them in and from work. So RJ would suggest that that's something that you would need to look at. And again, I appreciate Vice Mayor Duff making a comment about making sure that the language is appropriate, that we reach out to our Spanish-speaking community. We have, we know we have Cynthia Escudera. I know that there are members from your department, RJ, that may be able to access or reach out to those community members that may not be able to fill the survey via computer, but we need to reach out to those community members as well because they are a part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. You know, I have a few thoughts to share. I am, I'm really proud of the canal paths in Mesa, Arizona. This is one of the things that really is special about our community. Sometimes I brag that in Mesa, we have, you know, more canals than the city of Venice. I have no idea if that's true or not, but I love to brag about that. And I, so I was excited that we included this active transportation part of the Mesa Moves bond package. And as has been noted, what we said is $20 million, and we're going to do needs assessments. We're going to talk to people in the community. We're going to figure out, you know, how to best use that money. And so this is that important next step in that promise that we made to the voters. Counselor, Vice Mayor Duffs and several of my colleagues point that these canal paths are not really just recreational, they are an active part, an important part of the transportation of many people in our community, I think is a point that we need to reiterate. I am one who uses, who loves and use these paths as often as I can, on a daily basis if possible. And when Vice Mayor was making those comments, I kind of reflected. And a lot of times when I'm on the canal, I'm saying hello to other people that are out recreating, but a lot of the times too, I see, you know, a woman with her head down walking to the bus stop. And so I think that we need to make sure that we are, I mean, if there's a win-win situation where we can accommodate both recreational users and people who rely on the paths for transportation, I think that's important that we try to do that. As I look at the map, it reminds me of a puzzle, you know, laid out on a table, and you've got clump here and a clump here and a clump there, and it's always exciting when you can connect the clumps of puzzle pieces. So I'm, I'll be curious to see if that's the best way to spend this $20 million. $20 million sounds like a lot of money, but when it's $2 million a mile, you know, we have to realize that this is very competitive to see how are we going to spread this peanut butter out, you know, across our city. So I'm looking forward to this process. I'm glad that we're doing it, and I'll look forward to participating, but more importantly, hearing what the input is from our community so that we can use this very valuable money to have the biggest impact possible. So I know this is agendaized to provide direction, but I think the consensus of this group is just to proceed with the stakeholder reaching out and going through social media and every other device possible, the public survey. Thank you very much for putting that slide back up. I'm not sure that we need a vote on this. I think we can just express that it's council's consensus to proceed with the timeline and with the plan that staffs presented. Is that fair?
Thank you, Mayor. That'll work.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, RJ, and everyone for that great presentation. Next item on our agenda is to acknowledge receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Seconded by Mr. Luna. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Heredia.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Duff.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well, so that passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, I know you've been very busy. Who would like to start? Mr. Luna, are you getting ready? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thursday, March 18th, I attended on the layup board of directors meeting to give reports on our leadership. And great meeting. I volunteered to be part of a discussion with municipal leaders relative to what's happening at the southern borders. So I'm excited to be part of that committee, and we're going to be looking at immigration and issues related to that. This Monday, I met with representatives from NLC to talk about additional recruitment of municipal leaders from throughout the United States, particularly in Arizona through National League of Cities. On Tuesday, I'm part of a committee through the National League of City that looks at charters. And so I'm part of a charter committee, and there's a number of members. It's the Model City Charter Program, if you will. And it's very, we had very exciting conversations, and a lot had to do with, as city leaders, how we instill social equity in municipal government. I am part of the Social Equity Subcommittee that will continue to work on issues to hope to bring social equity in government in the forefront of policy and management discussions and decision-making in Mesa and beyond. Later today, I will be attending the Lunch and Learn event that's being held at Falcon Field. So I want to encourage any businesses that are in and around the Falcon Field area to attend that luncheon. Look at the Falcon Field website to get more information. I'm excited to be part of this, the unveiling of a new facility additions and to hear about developments at the airport. Again, I want to encourage our residents to attend that to learn more about what's happening. And again, tomorrow, I will be chairing the Arizona Mega Region webinar at 1:00 PM. I'm very excited to be part of this event. We are very fortunate to have former Congressman Kobe, Counselor Generals, and international leaders from Arizona Sonora to discuss developments in the international community as well as our response to boosting economic development in both states after the COVID-19 pandemic. That's all I have to report, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Vice Mayor Duff?
Thank you. On Saturday, I attended, I was a panelist on the collective leadership program. It was an annual retreat, which was held virtually, and I was on the panel with Jeff McVeigh, our Downtown Transformation Manager, and Jimmy Troy of ASU. And we spoke about why Mesa and about creative placemaking. And we had great conversations about why downtown Mesa is a place for creatives. That was very powerful. On Tuesday, I did an interview LDS newsroom at The Groves, which is part of the Temple Project and the Significant Project, one of the first significant projects that are completed in downtown and the impact that it has on our east end of downtown. And it was a fun and worthwhile interview. Also, that evening, I was a judge on the Mayor's Youth Committee, and I'll let the mayor or councilmember Spillsbury expand on that since there are also judges, but I want to know who won, which team won? So please cover that for me. And right now, right after we disconnect today, I'll be running out to a team-up, to cleanup event with the Code Compliance Department down here, Seventh Drive, and from Seventh Drive to Broadway near Mesa Drive. So we'll be moving, cleaning up some yards with our neighbors, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to let the suspense, you know, build for a little while, Vice Mayor Duff, I won't announce who the winner is until after Councilmember Spillsbury speaks. Go ahead, Julie.
I was also going to ask who won. So, yeah, I loved being a panelist for that. It was a bunch of, the Mayor's Youth Committee each did a presentation on project ideas for Mesa, and I loved it. It was so fun to hear these teenagers. I was so impressed. They had some really incredible ideas, some ideas I hope we implement in our city. So that was a really fun thing to be a part of. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Kevin Thompson. He connected me yesterday with Sergeant Nick Lean with our Heat Squad, and we had a great conversation. That is the Human Exploitation and Trafficking Squad. They're doing some really important work there. And then Sergeant Lean took me on a tour of the Mesa Family Advocacy Center and just helped me understand what is going on there. I was horrified and also inspired to hear what's going on in our city and the really, really important work that these members of our police force are doing to help fight sex trafficking in our city. And so I just really enjoyed having that experience yesterday. I also wanted to bring up that, starting Monday, something I'm super excited about, the city of Mesa has partnered with Mesa Public Schools and Chris Powell, and they're launching their Move One Mesa movement. Chris Powell is doing the Move One Million across the nation, and he wants to get people moving. And so he decided to launch it in Mesa, since that's his hometown. And so as part of this, they're doing a whole week of activities to focus on moving Mesa forward. We, they're going to do a day of physical health, mental health, a day of kindness, and a day of community. And I just love it. I think it's a really important thing, and something I'm particularly excited about is the Kindness Day, which is Thursday, April 1st. We are passing out a kindness card to every single elementary student in the city, and then I'm hoping to get them in businesses also. That we're basically just asking anyone that gets one of these kindness cards to write a note of thanks to someone or a note of encouragement or just to say hello. And I just love the thought that thousands of these cards could be spreading across Mesa. And so if you're interested, if you have a business or want some of these cards, you can email district2@mesaaz.gov to get some kindness cards. We'll bring those to you. They're free, obviously. And if you're interested to find out more about Move One Mesa, I think the email or the website will be launched on Monday as well, and it's move with the number one mesa.com. So I'm excited about that. That's it for me.
Thank you, Julie. Counsel, other comments? Mr. Luna, then Mr. Freeman?
Sorry, Mayor. I just want to mention that we have thousands of volunteers that have been given vaccines throughout the city of Mesa over at the Mesa Convention Center. Today, I'm going to be joining them for lunch. But, you know, if you have an opportunity to stop by, I really thank the countless volunteers, and we have to really thank our public safety, Mesa Police, Mesa Fire Medical, and all those volunteers that have been spending time, you know, eight-hour days, 12-hour days, giving vaccines to so many of our residents. And today, I'm going to be joining them for a quick luncheon, so, but we really need to acknowledge them and thank them for all their hard work.
Well, thank you, Mr. Luna. And I'll just, you would never say this, but you and Hilda are chief among them. I know your wife, who's a health administrator, but also a nurse, you know, has been volunteered a lot of shifts, as have you. So thank you very much for what you've done and for expressing your appreciation for those volunteers. Mr. Freeman?
Thanks, Mayor. We were talking about the multi-use pass in our canal system, and yesterday I went with Beth Huni and her staff to a tunnel that was closed up 21 years ago on North Val Vista, and we excavated the tomb. Talis Construction excavated a tomb, and it's a beautiful 12-foot-high, 12-foot-wide tunnel going underneath Val Vista as you come north off the hill. And hopefully that tunnel was spent, you know, by city dollars numerous, well, 21 years ago, and now we'll be able to leverage that tunnel and provide a safe path for users, not only recreational, but also hopefully those who choose to ride to work. So with that, the construction is supposed to start next year, January 2022, and I look forward to that. I know, Mayor, you use that path quite often, and this will be a great focal point for people to safely get under a very busy road. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I'm a little offended you didn't let me know that you were exhuming the tomb. I would have loved to have seen that. I brag that that stretch of canal path is an uninterrupted six miles with no vehicular traffic. So if you want to ride a bike or go for a run and not worry about getting hit by a car, you can start at McDowell, go all the way to the Granite Reef Dam, uninterrupted. The only exception was Val Vista, where you had to go over, you know, take your life in your hands and cross the street. And now that that tunnel has been brought back, you know, that's a real asset for people if you know folks that want to go recreate and not worry about being hit by a car. So that's exciting news. Frankie, did I see your hand up? Okay. That's a no. Okay, you're waving me off. All right. Thanks. Counsel, any other comments? I have a couple. I think we all, I know, want to give an enthusiastic shout-out to our Fire Chief, Mary Camelli, who was voted Fire Chief of the Year for major metropolitans in the entire United States. We all know that that's well-deserved. Anyone who knows Mary is a big fan of Mary's and the wonderful job she does as our Fire Chief. So next time you see her, just make sure you give her a round of applause and make sure she knows how much we appreciate her. As the Vice Mayor and Ms. Spillsbury indicated, we had a Mayor's Youth Committee event this week. I appreciate their help in helping me with this event. Each year, the Mayor's Youth Committee, it's, let me just give a shout-out for that organization. If you know kids who are juniors or seniors in high school, please encourage them to apply to be on this organization. It's a great way for them to get to know what's going on in the city. And what we get out of it is, at the end of this, they make a presentation with, you know, a fresh set of young teenager eyes as to what are some good ideas that we ought to explore as a community. Every year, I am blown away by the quality of these presentations. Very, very good ideas that oftentimes are quickly incorporated into our organization and the way that we do things. As the Vice Mayor and Ms. Spillsbury indicated, we had some really very good ideas that came up, and so it was hard to make a decision, but there was scoring involved. I did not, you know, my vote didn't count any more than anyone else's, but we can have a drum roll and announce that Group Two, who, their idea was to have a youth advisory council to address and try to promote additional youth activities in the community, including downtown movie nights that are going to be really a great and real thing that will happen as soon as we've got the mother of all screens on the side of the ASU building and in front of a beautiful park. That's an amenity that's going to just really be very much loved very quickly, I think, in our downtown and throughout our city. So Group Two won, and we will look forward to implementing a youth advisory council in our community. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Heredia, go ahead.
Yeah, I do have something to report on. Earlier this week, Chris Brady and a couple of the staff here at Mesa toured the Valley Metro Maintenance and Operations Yard, the improvements that are happening there, which will...
that are happening there, which will, based on the improvements that are happening throughout the valley on the line, you know, Phoenix has has multiple projects going on and and expanding light rail, expanding light rail to south central and up north. And then Tempe has a new streetcar that will be launching later this year. And so we we toured the operations there. And then also got to look at the the new streetcar that has arrived and will be will be set up for the the new Tempe streetcar program, which looked very sharp and hopefully look at how we can keep on expanding, you know, that type of transportation options throughout the valley. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Frankie. All right. That concludes the items on our agenda. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
So Mayor, we're excited to invite the council back in person, beginning on, and I know it's, it's not an April Fool's joke, but on April 1st, next Thursday, we would welcome the council back and to the, to the chamber. So our next meeting will be Thursday, April 1st, and then, of course, that will be followed by a city council meeting on April 5th. So we'll see you then. Thank you.
Okay. I I see the the Plexiglas that's been installed for our protections. I'm wondering if there's like a Tupperware lid that's going to be put on top of each one of us when we get together to make sure we're all safe. But it is a sign that we're making progress in in our goal to return to normality. So thank you. Counsel, that concludes everything on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury, seconded by Mr. Luna. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. We are adjourned.